And we're live. We are live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. Councilmember Farrelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Galumbach.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Council President Pritchard.
Yeah.
Quorum is present.
From the top.
Item number one, Historic District Application, eighty-four, eighty-eight, ninety, ninety-four, ninety-six, one hundred and one oh two for the street.
Items one, two, and three are open. I guess they all need public hearings.
Okay, motion is to schedule public hearings on March ninth, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Next item.
Are they, one, two, and three are tabled?
Yeah, motion is to table one, two, and three and schedule public hearings for, for March ninth, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item four, Request to Speak at Legislation Committee.
Items open?
This item is open. We have several speakers to speak on this item, so we're asking everyone to keep their comments to three minutes, and then we will likely have some questions after, and then also, I, I believe we are going to be joined by some people from Commissioner Helfer's office in Public Works as well. So we'll get started the way everything's listed on the agenda. Peter Rizzo, you're first.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me today. I speak today as a resident of Buffalo and as a father, as well as in my capacity as a certified urban planner, certified government auditor, and certified fraud examiner. In August 2019, the city announced it would install speed cameras in twenty school zones under an effort called the School Zone Safety Program. Since then, city officials have maintained that this program has one focus, to reduce school zone vehicle crashes in the name of child safety. Given that Buffalo's poverty rate is twenty-eight point eight percent, it surprised me that city officials would use speed cameras to calm traffic in school zones when countless other more effective, low-cost alternatives exist that don't result in financial penalties on residents. As a planner, auditor, and fraud examiner, I found this condition to be suspicious, and so I conducted an independent review of the School Zone Safety Program, including all twenty locations that will go live on March first, to determine whether the city has taken reasonable and responsible steps to accomplish the program's single objective. Through this work, I found that half of the city's speed camera sites have among the lowest school zone crash rates in Buffalo. Instead, the city has placed nearly all of its cameras in school zones with the highest traffic counts. I also found that the city has disproportionately targeted high-poverty minority neighborhoods with speed cameras, and that persons living nearest Buffalo's speed cameras have received the most violations. What's more is that speed is not even a leading cause of weekday daytime pedestrian crashes in Buffalo. In addition, the city's school zone signage violates city and state laws as well as federal regulations, and the city has failed to take basic non-punitive action to improve child safety under the School Zone Safety Program. Actions speak louder than words, and although we've repeatedly been told that child safety is the only priority of this program, the facts don't support that assertion. I contend that child safety is being used as an excuse to operate a predatory enforcement program that targets Buffalo's most impoverished residents. Make no mistake, this program is a form of systemic racism that increases hardship on black families, for example. The black median household income is about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and many families spend over sixty percent of their income on housing and transportation costs. Meanwhile, we have children living in houses filled with lead as well as other hazards. When you allow racist, regressive, and predatory programs like this to exist, you feed the cycle of poverty by hurting those who can least afford it. The evidence I would like to present to you warrants the immediate termination of Buffalo's Speed Camera Initiative in place of more effective traffic calming alternatives. Now is the time for the council to educate itself on the facts and take decisive action before all twenty cameras go live on March first. I kindly request the members of this committee vote now to suspend the rules for about ten minutes so that I can present to you my findings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Right now, we're going to go on to the next speaker who is scheduled to be on here, and then we will give the council members an opportunity to ask questions, and then I believe Commissioner Helfer is here also. So the next speaker we have is Jolanda Hill.
Yes, good morning, everybody. Yeah, my name is Jolanda Hill. I'm here representing the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition, and we want to see the elimination and the ending of the school Speed Zone Camera Program. So Buffalo's expanding use of cameras to issue speeding tickets has no logical relationship to community safety. There is no evidence of significant uptick in traffic accidents or fatalities that would necessitate the use of speed cameras in addition to traditional traffic enforcement by police. Speed cameras are about revenue generation, period. The data provided by Mr. Rizzo, which he will present today, crews at the speed cameras disproportionately find people in poor and predominantly black neighborhoods. Buffalo already has a Slow Streets Program in place to resolve the speeding issue, yet the city has not invested in or proactively used this program for its intended purposes. What the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition is demanding or recommending is that the city of Buffalo use the money already raised from the Speed Camera Program and instead invest in just streets. So what that is, is just investing in infrastructure. Similar to what Complete Streets is, that's an ordinance that has already been passed, and similar to what the Slow Streets Program aims to do, which is put in speed months, narrow lanes, these are things that don't keep people in poverty. These are things that don't, you know, create these unnecessary, you know, interactions with the police. And so overall, we're just asking the, for the city of Buffalo to just end this program. Like, it shouldn't be put on pause. This program should just end, and we're asking, or I'm asking, and the coalition is asking for the common council to come to a vote on this today. I think that it's being drawn out, and I think it should be put to an end today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I saw on the agenda there was one more speaker. I think it's at Sam Herbert. Is Sam on the call right now?
We've been working with Mr. Herbert to get him on, but he's not here yet. We continue to update you, sir.
Okay, all right. Do any of my colleagues have any questions at this point, or we'll move to Councilmember Galumbach?
Yeah, Mr. Farrelotto, I wouldn't have a problem with Mr. Rizzo being given some extra time that he could present his proposals to us or his findings. Maybe we want to do it at the end of the meeting, perhaps. By that time, Mr. Herbert would be on, but I think it would be good for us to get his information.
Okay, we can, I think, we, if we're going to do that, I think we should do it at the end of the meeting because there's other items to be taken first, and we can certainly do that. So if Commissioner Helfer and Finn want to hold off, or did you want to say something at this point, or do you want to wait until the end?
I'll wait to the end. The only thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, is I have not seen any of this. Nothing's been presented to me. I will be listening today, and I'd like the opportunity two weeks from now to come before your honorable body and and do a thorough analysis of what I hear from Mr. Rizzo, and then get our side out as well, whether we agree or disagree.
Okay, I think that makes sense because I don't, I don't, I don't, none of the, or I don't believe any of the council members have have had or seen that as well, any of that information either. So, Councilmember Wyatt?
Mr. Chair, I know this is your meeting. We couldn't hear Mr. Rizzo. We couldn't just go with his information now? I mean, I know we have a pretty lengthy agenda, but we couldn't hear his information now, so we can go, keep staying in the flow of where we are?
I mean, I could, if someone, can someone just pull up the agenda for a quick, for a moment, so I can see it on the screen? How, and then can you go down to the tabled items? I think we, if we can, I would rather just wait to get the other ones because everyone else who is on the agenda afterwards, we have like the three-minute rule, and if we're going to break that, I don't want to delay people that were also in line, and so I would I would like to do that. Okay. So I guess
Most of the people did advance.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon, who has joined the meeting. Next item.
Item number five, Plastic Utensils Upon Request Legislation.
Items open?
This item is open. John Salasney is here to speak. John, are you here?
Yes, I am. I brought this to the attention of the Common Council, a proposal that is in the New York City Legislature right now, where they are proposing to regulate plastic waste by not banning the use of forks and knives and spoons that come with your dinners, or the plast, the plastic packets, and so on and so forth. But to regulate it in a way where it doesn't put a hardship on the, on the restaurateurs, they are still allowed to give these items out. But customer needs to actively request the item. Just, you know, just for a couple examples, I got a reference from a Clean Water Action study that showed that seventy-seven percent of all of the to-go meals that are being purchased are going directly to the home. So if they're going to the home, people have utensils already. People have their own condiments already. People generally look at the bottom of the bag when they're done, and they say, oh, there were plastic this and that in the bottom, and they end up throwing them out with the rest, rest of, rest of the bag. A Surf Rider study found that the utensils, as, as you probably all know, are not recyclable in the first place. I mean, no, no, no recycling program in the United States will recycle your knives, forks, and spoons. And that ninety-eight percent of the takeout or delivery meals are either consumed at home or at a workplace. And I don't know about your workplaces, but, you know, I work for Blue Cross, and a majority of our, our workers will have, have an extra set of cutlery in their drawers, you know, just, you know, in case they bring something and they forget their, forget their utensils with their lunch, or they, or they have a, you know, there's a birthday party or something, they have it available instead of having to go for the plastic fork, or things like that. The law in New York City is similar to proposals that are currently active in San Francisco, in Portland, Oregon. And, you know, basically, the, you know, the purpose obviously is to reduce the volume of waste, but the side effect of a regulation like this is that it's a cost savings by, by the elimination of that, of that cost to the restaurateurs. So if, even, even if you just, you know, assume that one out of two people will not take the cutlery, that's a fifty percent savings in that, in all those extra items for the restaurants. I mean, they are, you know, they need help as much as anybody else. Basically, how, you know, how this would work, you would have the signage in the restaurants. You would have a checkoff box on a takeout order or a prompt for, you know, if you're doing a phone order to, to request, to request the items. It has to be, has to be an active opt-in to make, you know, make this law work. And, you know, the positives, in addition to the cost savings for the restaurants, it is still compliant with Americans for Disability Act. So if you added, you know, things like plastic straws to this regulation, or, you know, you know, various other things, they still, you know, people, people who have, have needs, you know, for disabilities would still have the ability to, you know, obtain the items with their meals.
If you can just do your clothes, if you can just do a conclusion now as the few, three minutes are
Yeah, yeah, I'm on, I'm on the last, last two items. The other, the other thing with the regu, regulation allows restaurants still to provide the same level of service as they do today. And this, like, legislation, like I say, reduces the amount of plastic waste, which is totally unrecyclable in a city that's, you know, still striving for thirty-four or more. The, the elimination of, of a plastic waste is equally, if not more important, than trying to recycle something. So I hope that you, you know, you consider the item twenty-one, one seventy, the Plastic Utensils Upon Request Regulation for Passage in the City.
Thank you very much for your time and talking to council about that. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
We have a motion is to, to table the item.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number six, Special Use, five seventy-two South Division for Tobacco Sales.
Motion to table. Item six, seven, eight, and nine.
Seconded by Council President Pritchard.
Motion to revisit item number four.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbach. So if the the speaker, Mr. Rizzo, asked to, to speak longer on this. Peter, if you could do this, if you can email what your, your data or presentation to the Council Chief of Staff, and that's Malcolm Eartha. His email address is M E R T H A at city-buffalo.com. If you can do that, and he will distribute what your, your, your presentation to all of the council members, and then if you, when you're speaking on it now, if you can just touch on the the main points or summaries of it, that would, that'll be the best way to go through it.
Sure, I did just email it to Malcolm. Would it be possible for me to share my screen for this? It'll, it'll go more quickly, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, you can, yes, you can share. If you go to the green button on the center, you can go to share screen.
It's disabled right now.
Okay, yes.
Got it.
Try, try again now.
Okay, can you see that?
Yes, we could, we could, we could see this, and again, just to reiterate, if you can just touch on the touch on the summarizations of it, instead of going by line, that would be
I'm not going to read line by line. I'm a professional at this. So what we have here is, half of the city's school zone speed camera sites, excuse me, have among the lowest school zone crash rates in Buffalo. So think about this, fifty percent of the school zones with speed cameras have among the most crash rates. We have not concentrated those cameras in areas of the city that have the highest crash rates, which is what you would expect for a program designed to reduce school zone crashes. In fact, one of those school zones experiences just two crashes a year. Meanwhile, others have much higher rates of crashes. The numbers are all here. They'll be in the document that Malcolm will circulate. If you don't put the speed cameras in locations where you have the highest crashes, they're not effective. This has been studied at exhaustion by a number of different outlets. Finding two, nearly all city's speed camera sites have among the highest school zone traffic rates. So eighty-five percent of these cameras are placed in areas that have high traffic counts. Instead of focusing on where there's the most crashes, as in what the, the administration has said their goal is to reduce, they focused on high traffic counts, which precipitates higher violation information, or a higher number of violations. Again, that, the data is there for you to review. The city of Buffalo has disproportionately targeted high-poverty minority neighborhoods with speed cameras. This is what really gets me. Seventy percent of those school zones with speed cameras are in high-poverty census tracts. Sixty-five of them are in census, percent are in areas where minority residents outnumber whites. And some of them are even in low-vehicle-crash-rate school zones. This gives you a breakdown of where those cameras are going to be located, where the school zones are. Delaware District, you've got five cameras. That includes some that are on your border. Eloquent, Maston, same thing. University, four. South District, you got off easy. Lovejoy, easy. Niagara, fairly easy. You're still going to get complaints. But this is the breakdown. Income. Buffalo's median income, household income, is thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. So I looked at everything below that, at or below thirty-seven thousand dollars or so, and I found that thirteen areas have household income that is lower than the city's median household income. Five are in census tracts where the median income is twenty-five thousand dollars or below. One of them has just thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. That's their median income. That's, that's very, very low. Poverty. Fourteen are in census tracts where the poverty rate is thirteen, thirty percent or higher. Nine have forty percent or higher poverty rate, and one has a fifty percent, it's actually fifty-four percent poverty rate. That's the Harvey Austin School on Sycamore. Race and ethnicity, very interesting. There are only seven schools with speed cameras that are in predominantly white neighborhoods. The rest of them are concentrated in areas where minorities outnumber whites. And you can see that in this map. By the way, there is a link for all the maps in the bottom right of the screen. You can click on that or go to that URL, and it's an interactive map. Here's something, Bennett Park Montessori, they have a forty-five percent poverty rate, median household income is thirteen thousand, and their black or African-American population is sixty-seven percent. Finding four, Persons Living Nearest Buffalo Speed Cameras Receive the Most Violations. A number of times I've heard, don't worry, it's commuters, it's people living outside of Buffalo that are, are getting at least half of the, the tickets. Great, you're still getting half of those in the city. In fact, in the four months total, roughly, that those cameras have been active, when you add up all the days, forty-four thousand, six hundred and six violations have been issued. Now, this is according to data from the Parking Violations Bureau. Forty-four thousand, six hundred have been issued to city zip codes. That's two point two three million dollars. Now, whether the city has received all of that, I don't know. I assume a lot of people have not yet paid those violations. But almost a quarter of that is in one zip code, one four two one five. They have three speed cameras. Seventy-one percent of those are, went to vehicle owners in high-poverty zip codes. Fifty-two percent went to vehicle owners in areas where the, the median household income is below Buffalo's median household income, and sixty-two went to predominantly minority zip codes. The data right there for you to evaluate. On December first, twenty sixteen, Mayor Warren of Rochester terminated that city's red light camera program. And she said that she cannot in good conscience wage a, wage a fight against poverty while also imposing burdensome fines that have a disproportionate impact on those living in poverty. It's the same situation in Buffalo, and I ask, which one of you will stand up and make that same statement and same demand? Finding five, the city of Buffalo's school zone signage violates city and state laws and federal regulations. This is very surprising. You know, the city has failed to post fifteen mile-an-hour speed limit signs beginning at the quarter-mile mark, as required under the city code. The initial fifteen mile-hour speed limit signs are excessively close to schools. In fact, in my findings, the fieldwork that I conducted, I found that some areas we've placed end-school-speed-limit signs farther from the schools than we have the beginning of the school zone. This will give you information on the statutes that apply here and whatnot. You can read at your leisure. Nichols School, we've got a situation where the first fifteen mile-an-hour speed limit sign is five hundred and forty feet from a school building, and just three hundred and sixty-five feet from a camera that monitors traffic going southbound. Their end-school-speed-limit sign is eleven hundred feet away from the nearest building. Example two, Buffalo Promised Neighborhood Children's Academy. There, that's also the Westminster Community Charter School. Their first fifteen mile-an-hour speed limit sign is two hundred and seventy-five feet from Westminster School Building and four hundred feet from the camera that'll nab you on that, on Bailey. The end-school-speed-limit sign is just two hundred feet from Buffalo Promised Neighborhood Children's Academy. Speed is not the leading cause of weekday daytime pedestrian crashes in the city of Buffalo. We're using speed cameras to chase an issue that's not the biggest problem facing our city. Four point two pedestrians a year on weekdays from six AM to about six PM in Buffalo are hit by vehicles where speed is a contributing factor, according to Buffalo Police Reports. Four point two, compare that to distracted driving, to failure to yield, and pedestrian confusion. Then clearly, we have other areas that we need to focus more attention on. But again, remember, the only feature of the School Zone Safety Program is speed cameras. That's the only safety feature that is a part of that initiative. Here's the top ten most frequent contributing factors. Read at your leisure. Finally, finding seven, city of Buffalo has failed to take basic non-punitive action to improve child safety under this program. Striping crosswalks is an example of a basic, basic elementary requirement for a school zone. Give me a break. The Buffalo's not doing it, but we'll put up speed cameras, take a walk over to Hutch Tech, and you'll see it yourself. The, they're not striped, but we've got a speed camera up to get our drivers. Do we really care about children if we're not taking those basic steps? I really, some of you have to question this. Here's, here are the photos. These are examples of non-punitive measures that the city can easily apply. They're low-cost, like striping the streets, painted curb extensions, raised crosswalks. They help create greater visibility for not only pedestrians, but also for drivers to see pedestrians as they're crossing. Curb extensions, painted corners, overhead signage, pavement markings. There are many different options that we can go through here. Conclusions. Based on what evidence I've identified and the city of Buffalo's implementation of this program, this information indicates that child safety is not an evident priority of the program. Crash reduction is not an evident priority of the program. The program represents a social injustice. It represents a perpetuation of discriminatory enforcement initiatives by the city of Buffalo. It represents political and security theater. We are not chasing the highest causes or the greatest, most severe causes of crashes for pedestrians. And the highest program priority appears to be maximum citation production based on the placement of signs and the selection of schools. What does the city do about this? Specifically, the common council. Terminate the demonstration program. You have the power to do so. It is a demonstration program. It's not mandated for implementation. You can pull the plug on it. Direct all funds to be, that are generated by this program, all of them, every dollar, to be invested in just streets improvements in this city. Amend the city code to redefine school zone in accordance with Cornell University Local Roads Program. They have some great examples and, and parameters to apply. Require the implementation of non-punitive traffic calming measures. Require annual inspection and restriping of crosswalks in the city of Buffalo. Request that the legislature allow the city to reduce the citywide speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. Right now, you can't do it. Request that the legislature allow the city to reduce the citywide speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. Right now, you can't do it without an amendment to that law. Request a formal audit of this program by the state comptroller's office. I believe that that is absolutely necessary. And I say that as a certified auditor. And as a fraud examiner, I would request that an investigation be done by the state attorney general. Thank you very much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to see if Commissioner Finn or Commissioner Finn is here. Commissioner Finn?
Uh, thank you. Um, as Commissioner Helfer mentioned earlier, um, he nor myself have had a a chance to look at this. So I'm I'm just going to react briefly on a on a kind of high level. Uh, and then reiterate his request that that the administration be given time to thoroughly examine this this report and provide a a more detailed response. So um, just a a couple items. I'm I'm going to respond to the the findings as Mr. Rizzo laid them out. Uh, findings one and two was about uh, the the crash data isn't right and and the speed data, you know, how it was used was related to traffic volumes. And when uh, Public Works analyzed the the greatest risk, that's how we started this. Was we looked at the schools that had the greatest risk? And that was a combination of all crashes. Uh, Mr. Rizzo's report talks about injury crashes. So we looked at all crashes. Uh, as well as traffic volumes. That was the the risk data that we use to prioritize the uh, top schools. Uh, that was all shared with with the common council and we'd be happy to to go into it again. Um, number three talks about how uh, the crash data are of the uh, cameras were put in areas that are predominantly uh, impoverished. Um, that's why we looked at crash data. Crash data and traffic data aren't necessarily analogous to uh, areas that are impoverished. And from my perspective, I think that's how we have to look at all of this, looking at raw data, because uh, at the end of the day, what what I have found in in my time here, it's almost ten years. Is the the squeakiest wheels get the grease. And traditionally, the squeakiest wheels are those people who have the time to be able to constantly be, you know, bugging us for traffic improvements in those those areas. Uh, those people tend to be affluent. They have more time. Um, I feel and and what I want to do and will continue to do as as a commissioner is focus on the data so that we're addressing the problems for the people who may not even know that it's a problem or may not be able to advocate for themselves. There's a a serious safety issue in their community that we need to stand up for. Um, the finding number four is about the uh, residents getting um, tickets in their neighborhood. Um, that's something that I I personally believe is just my opinion. Uh, that will reduce o- over time as as our residents get used to the cameras being in their areas along their their the places that they travel, they're going to slow down, which is really I think the ultimate outcome that we want out of this. We really just want people to take their foot off the pedal for that thirty seconds it takes to travel through a school zone and make that school zone that much safer for the kids who are there during the day. Uh, finding number five was about the signage and that's um, that that finding wasn't even really close. The um, New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law cites that the maximum length for a school zone is a quarter mile. Not that you have to start them a quarter mile away. Uh, there's further information in the MUTCD that actually guides engineers to narrow in the total length of a school zone. So that it's not unduly penalizing drivers and having them slow down for, you know, just to use a a kind of ridiculous example, but it's you know, a traditional schoolhouse like you would see in Little House on the Prairie. You don't need a quarter mile long school zone for that. You would need one that say geez, five hundred feet. I don't. Um, I'm not positive, but each school zone was laid out particularly with the school layout um, that exists in the field. And we had our professional consultant uh, do that design for for each one. Uh, finding number six was about excessive speed not being a um, not being a not being listed in the MVA reports that are done by police when they when they do the crash reports. And um, my thought process on that was i- if you look at the items that were listed in that table that are the predominant reasons that are given um, by the police officers when they're filling out the reports. They tend to be things that are more cut and dry and uh, things that are kind of obvious based on what people would say at at a crash. So when an officer gets to a crash, typically they ask everybody, you know, what happened? Each side gives their story and then the officer makes a report based on that. Um, things like failure to yield right of way, running a stop sign or or a traffic signal. Those are things that are are more concrete and that people tend to report. So it it would make sense to me that those are things that generally get put into uh, the the police reports. Uh, and then the last finding about um uh, traffic calming and um, how that's done. Uh, our department has done uh, traffic calming measures at at schools and other parts of the city. Uh, that's something that I certainly want to continue. And I I think we all share that uh, a- as a government that uh, traffic calming is a need within the city. Uh, the reality is though, that's that need has uh, funding attached to it. Uh, that isn't readily available. The uh, especially major corridors. Uh, like I'll I'll use Niagara Street, for example. Um, that improvement is costing uh, close to twenty million dollars for the traffic calming that we're doing uh, on that corridor. Uh, we've done some more uh, smaller finite things. Uh, like, for example, um, at the Clinton Street Montessori School, we we put some bump outs in. Um, and other traffic calming measures. We've been working with the school on that one for a long time. Um, and we do have a a uh, improvement slated for the Harvey Austin School. Um, I believe that uh, that the improvements, uh, infrastructure improvements along with enforcement, along with education. And I've I've said that um, many times, that's a three prong approach uh, to reducing accidents and and making infrastructure or making our roads more safer. Uh, i- is the way to continue. Um, and I'm I'm happy to answer any questions or uh, take any further comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Helfer, would you like to add anything at the moment?
Uh, not not very much, to be honest with you. I like Commissioner Finn said, I I would prefer to, it's my first look at it, look at it in detail. Uh, go through the state law. Um, I I think that there are things that we will absolutely disagree with, but I'm not prepared to go into that today. I don't want to get into that today. I think the best methodology for that is to let us review it and come back to your audible body. Uh, two weeks uh, after we analyze uh, Mr. Rizzo's report.
Okay, so we'll send, there's a copy that's going to Malcolm Eartha. We'll make sure that that's sent to both um, the Department of Public Works and to Commissioner Helfer. And we will um, we'll go from there on that. Any colleagues, any questions?
Mr. Chair, you still, you have Sam Herbert. It looks appears to be on.
Oh. Okay, Sam Herbert. You have the floor. Press star six to be unmuted. Sam, if you could press star six, then you should be unmuted on your phone.
Okay, y'all can hear me now, correct?
Yes.
Good. This is my first time ever doing it. First, I'd like to say a happy new years to each and every one of you. I'm calling in as a concerned citizen in regards to the speed cameras. Um, one. I uh, feel that uh, those who agreed to Mayor Brown's budget to include whatever money that was needed to um, set up these cameras, I believe the common council, you all approved the mayor's budget. Am I correct? And that was included? Is that correct? Hello?
Sam, if you want to make your statements, you have three minutes to speak and then we'll talk, we'll we'll further the conversation.
Okay, uh, my statement is, I think it's discriminating in regards to the amount of cameras that are in the zip code one four two one five compared to white communities. Um, the gentleman that spoke before Commissioner Flynn, I agree with him a hundred percent. And I just wanted to um, interject. If the common council, this body, the legislative body, I would like to see that this school camera issue be put on hold just for a minute. When I say a minute, I'm talking about maybe a week or two weeks. Where y'all can we discuss this issue and come up with a better plan? I want everyone to know that I support speed cameras in school zone. The average driver do not respect or adhere to the speed in school zones. And that's something that is very important. Um, and the council and the mayor should address that. Um, the public in general do not honor the speed limit in school zones. I've seen it too many times. I witnessed it. And um, I just think I'm calling in because I want to give my two cents. And I would like for the council and the mayor to put our um, your heads together and come up with a better plan. Uh, the gentleman said something about suburban individuals who drive in the city and out of the city uh, because they work in the city, uh, they have received uh, tickets um for speeding in the school zones. Um, I just think everyone should be subjective to respecting the speed zones in school districts. And we can't leave it to the average driver, the public to adhere to it because they won't.
Thank you very much, Sam. If you could just wrap up with a conclusion, we're going to move on to the next speaker.
Okay, who am I speaking to?
This is Councilman Fairlotta. You're speaking to the entire legislative committee.
Yeah, I just wanted to know who was uh, speaking just now. But in closing, that's my interest. That's my concern. That the speed cameras, and I believe that the way it's set up in those uh, poor areas in the um, zip code one four two uh, one five um, should seriously um be suppressed and come up with a better plan. Uh, thank you all for letting me speak. I just think the way everything is set up in regards to the speed zones and those poor areas in the city of Buffalo is discriminatory. Thank you. And um, I wait to hear if you've got anything you'd like to ask of me.
Thank you very much. Did colleagues, any questions from any of the council members? Councilmember Riot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to thank Mr. Rizzo for do giving us some outstanding information. Um, a lot of the stuff we may have felt, but we didn't have the documentation to show it. And sort of research you did was phenomenal, and I'm looking forward to delving in it even more deeply. Um, I think some of the things that you brought up are things that we we could not verbalize because we didn't have the data. Um, I think uh, Dr. Taylor, who came on, I saw the piece on Channel Two, did an excellent job in articulating it. And I think it's the 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 council has asked over and over again to pause this this program because it has not been managed well. And I think that I go back to the very beginning when we asked to be involved in the rollout. And we were not involved in a rollout. We were told that this was how it was going to be, and that's what was done. And from your information, when you say the sixteen of the twenty cameras are in the top half of the daily traffic counts speaks to something that we 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 don't know what they were in their minds, but we certainly could kind of feel what may have happened. Because again, I still stand and say, why do we have cameras on Bailey Avenue? There is not a school on Bailey Avenue. There's an early childhood center on Bailey Avenue. Um, but again, those things went on deaf ears. We still have signage up that hasn't had the proper times. That the entire day from seven to six thirty. You know, those are things that shouldn't be. And if we were really talking about a quality program, then all those things should have been addressed. I did a video in which I showed the same thing that you showed, that there was not marked crosswalks. Um, those are things that I've asked for in my district for the last three years. I've asked for speed humps in my district for the last three years. If this is really about the quality, if it's about safety, about children's safety, then all those things should have been happening prior to cameras. Um, we didn't need cameras, but I did support it because I don't want to see not one child harmed. However, after the rollout of this program, I cannot in good conscience say we should continue it because it continues to affect residents who are in hurting desperately. And we're still putting forth a program saying we want to penalize you. We talked about reducing fines on one end, but they're increasing fines one another. So again, Mr. Rizzo, I look forward to having further conversation with you. I look forward to delving into the information and I really appreciate um, your efforts and taking your expertise to bring this information to the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Council President Pridgen.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, there is, I think, um, one of the speakers talked about a pause. I think it was Mr. Herbert. Uh, this council did request a pause. Um, and right now, uh, whether uh, what it what is called a grace period is a pause or not. Uh, I count it as a pause. Um, and the pause that this council requi- requested. Um, because people are not being ticketed. I think that in in Councilmember Wyatt was correct. We we voted and and for Mr. Herbert's question. Yes, this council did vote and it was a part of uh, the budget. Uh, not everyone voted for the budget, but the majority of council members voted uh, for the budget. Um, and at the end of the day, um, again, I think that this is more for me about the we have a month, the administration has a month to work out some problems. Now, the thing that I would encourage is for Mr. Rizzo uh, not to wait until two weeks to talk to us. Uh, but to have some to, I I think that there should be a meeting with someone from uh, the administration because there may be uh, some things and we're all just receiving the report. Uh, there may be some things that may help make this better. I think what happens sometime if somebody thinks differently than another, then they're labeled an enemy instead of a contributor of how do we work together? If there's something in Mr. Rizzo's report that might help the commissioner, that might help either commissioner uh, before we come back. I think waiting the two weeks, and I know we're on um, the grace period, the pause period. Um, but at the end of the day, um, I always feel like working together works. And if there are some things there, I'd rather see those things changed now than before March. My fear is, um, as we're in this grace period, we should not be sleeping and pretending that there aren't some areas that need to be adjusted if this council is going to allow this program to go forward. And I give this warning because uh, I'm not, I'm not a predictor or else I I would, I would be a millionaire. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that predictor. But in my personal opinion is that when the first, second, third and fourth hits. If these problems and concerns are not worked out, there's going to be such tremendous pressure on this council uh, that there will probably be um, a veto proof move to end this program. Um, and if it is truly for the safety and the reason I voted, I'm going to be clear. Did not vote on this for for the revenue. I've said this over and over. I voted on it by the evidence that was presented to me at that time. When we were going through this, it was crickets from anybody opposing it. The 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 council meetings were full. I mean, the list was so long from parent groups to the school board, to uh, the bikers, everybody almost, I would say, and I'm I'm pulling a number about eighty-five percent of the people who engaged the council about this at that time were people who were supporting it. There were very, very few people who were against it. So we we listened to the people, uh, we looked at the data that was presented to us, but what I'm not afraid to do ever Uh, we looked at the data that was presented to us, but what I'm not afraid to do ever in life is to look back at something and be very open and transparent of my reason for making a decision. And then on my reason for saying we need to look back and, and being okay with that. I, I don't think that makes one side an enemy. I don't, I can't, I'm not going to lay this on, on the administration. I'm not going to lay it on the council. It was everybody together who made a decision and then made the decision when there was a veto uh, to have a compromise. We, we, we voted on that. But as this is unfolding, I think the worst thing, if we were in business and not in government, and we were creating a product, and we, we, we all agree that this is how the product should look. And then we look and we go, oh, oh, wait a minute, we, we built this without door handles. Why not go back and look at it and say, how do we build this in a different way? Um, and I think that's what's so important. And, and I know that there were some people who opposed it. I'm talking about the overwhelming majority of information that we were given when we made this decision was not this information. So my point is, is that now that we have some other information, let's not lose that information or kick this can so far down the road that we are in March and, and, and it hasn't been fixed because we're not talking to one another, these systems, and we have to talk to our, our constituents. Um, and so I know the commissioners are on, I don't, we don't, uh, obviously, we're not supervisors of the commissioners. Um, but I just kind of wanted to know if uh, someone would be interested in having a Zoom meeting with Mr. Rizzo after you have had a chance to go through this data to see if there's some things in here that could actually help uh, to better this program if it's not stopped. And that's basically to any of the commissioners who are on.
This is Mike Finn, sure. And, and that, that goes to Ms. Hill as well.
Yeah, I think that is so, so very important, Commissioner Finn, um, is to have those conversations so that when we do come back in two weeks, there has already been conversation uh, with someone who is obviously taking a great deal of time uh, to research this, so I really appreciate that. And I see Mr. Rizzo's head uh, going, yes, I know that the wider audience, maybe on Facebook, can't see that he is in agreement to that too. And I see Commissioner Helfer on, uh, because I think maybe there, maybe there could be, and may, maybe Mr. Rizzo's report is totally wrong. But you won't know if you don't talk. And so I want to see that conversation happen uh, that could benefit this city. Thank you.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Golumbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo um, most of what uh, the Council President said. Um, I don't think that this needs to be confrontational. I do think that it needs to be fixed. Um, as someone who supported the uh, cameras going up uh, along the school routes, um, you know, I knew that there would be problems when it would fir- when it was first rolled out because there's always problems, because you know, the best minds until things happen and the human element and the human factor and the factor of error comes into play. Um, you know, there's just unforeseen problems that happen on a regular basis. Um, and that's why when Mr. Rizzo had contacted me and other people on both sides, I do think that there can be some sort of common ground that we can find to make this a much better um, project. Uh, I do know, and I can only really speak anecdotally from my district. Um, there were a lot of problems along West Hurdle Middle School and Grabiar's Academy. Um, and interestingly enough to, uh, this sort of concurs what Mr. Rizzo and Mr. Finn said. Um, years ago, uh, Mike Finn was not the commissioner at that time, but he actually came and met with a community group. And he said to me, he goes, when we were talking over the phone, he goes, you know, it doesn't warrant, according to the records, um, that there's accidents, that things need to be done at the corner of Hurdle and Military. He said, but I want to see firsthand. And he came out for about thirty, forty minutes with myself and representatives from the West Hurdle Association. And we didn't see any accidents, but we saw probably a half a dozen near misses. And he looked at me and he said, you're right, something needs to be done here. And by what we simply did, and this is following the safe streets and Peter Rizzo's recommendations, um, we uh, restripped that corner. Now, my residents looked at me and rolled their eyes and said, oh, restriping isn't going to fix anything. And I said, well, let's just give it a chance. And I've seen that it has worked in other places. I can tell you that I can count on one hand the amount of calls that I've received to the office once that striping was done. Um, I, I should rephrase that. I've received numerous calls saying, oh my gosh, what a nice intersection we have now, but no complaints. And knock on wood, I hope I didn't jinx myself. So I think that Mr. Rizzo is right, that there needs to be a combination of uh, practices, you know, by looking at his data. Um, and I'm sure as uh, I think it was Mr. Helfer or Mr. Finn said that, you know, people, you know, statistics don't lie, statisticians do. Well, I don't think anybody's lying, but we see things from a certain perspective. And I think that by dialoguing and meeting together and following um, Council President Pridgen's suggestion that, you know, hopefully we can come up with a better project for this and ultimately, you know, keep those kids safe in the schools, you know, in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments before we? Councilmember Noah Kowski, and then um, Jolanda Hill, I see you with your hand up. I could only see so many people on the screen, so I see you now, and you'll go right after Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted to piggyback off of Council President's remarks. He's spot on with them. And, you know, we do have a committee meeting before uh, this program goes back live in March. So I think it's imperative that um, Mr. Rizzo and the commissioner meet so that we can uh, come up with a plan expeditiously before um, this plan does go live and there is a March catastrophe. So I believe that, you know, we do need to take this data and really examine it. And I really liked the point of the self-sustaining streets that Mr. Rizzo put in his um, outlined in his plans. I've been fighting for safe streets and have even put in a resolution that I've been working on to derive some of this funding collected from school zone revenues and to put it into uh, making our streets uh, you know, in traffic calming measures and self-sustaining streets. So I think it hits all the, the right markers, but I just wanted to uh, add my, my voice into that column with Council President Pridgen. Thank you.
You, um, Jolanda Hill, and then Majority Leader Rivera, I see.
Yes, hi. Um, so the first thing I want to say is that the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition Coalition's uh, campaign to uh, for the city of Buffalo to invest in just streets was voted on as a top ten issue for this year um, for the community agenda. So I will say we're also advocating for just streets. If you're not clear what just streets are, it's as simple as investing in infrastructure, the same thing that Peter Rizzo referenced. The same thing that Mission Awakawski is talking about. We're all talking about the same things. We are all on the same page there. I will also say the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition has been opposing the cameras since March of twenty twenty. I put that in the chat as a receipt. So there has been people opposing, and I know Darius Pridgen, uh, sorry, uh, Councilman Pridgen, you did say that there has been a select view, and we are that select view. We have been advocating against the cameras uh, since that time. And then I just want to speak on the money aspect because it seems to be that the money keeps coming back around as an issue. Um, but within my research as part of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Board, uh, being on the board, it doesn't take that much money to invest in striping and speed bumps. So on average, I just looked this up on Google, uh, it only takes about twenty-five hundred two dollars, um, on average, to invest in speed bumps. So there's only twenty cameras um, in these school zones in Buffalo, and I did the math. And if you multiply that uh, by twenty, that's about fifty thousand dollars. It's not too much money. I'm sure there's some fees maybe that go along with that, but that's not a million dollars. Additionally, um, I did some research in Cleveland. Um, it only took Cleveland about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to stripe and restripe their entire city. Cleveland is two times bigger than the city of Buffalo. So I'm just putting that out there. Um, it doesn't take as much money as I think you all kind of think, and I would love to talk more with the common council members about the money aspects, um, because I don't think that should be a barrier to, you know, stopping this kind of predatory program that is in place right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Um, Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to thank Peter Rizzo for the data that you provided us. I, yeah, sometimes I wish we had the data when we were making decisions, but as Council President said, there were a lot of loud voices as we were going through this process earlier on. And the data that we had was coming from the administration. Uh, and this question perhaps is to the administration. Uh, Mr. Rizzo talked about highest crash um, statistics. Um, areas where we have the highest crash may not necessarily be in school zones. There might be in other areas, and that is a concern of mine because we're talking about the safety of the children. Uh, I'm thinking about the safety of the children on the side streets as well as in school districts. So uh, I am concerned about that. Uh, I've had times where I have requested stop signs near schools. And we've had to have traffic studies just to get a stop sign that the residents want it nearest school. To this day, it's not there. Uh, so um, there have been low-hanging things that we requested, the stop signs, the striping. Um, so I am concerned about uh, the city's response um, to those low-level things that we've asked for, the stop signs, the striping that we've asked and asked. And that we even encouraged them to put a, a line in the budget specifically for striping and restriping. Uh, that has not been done. It may be this year, but I'm talking about a specific line for restriping around schools, around institutions. Um, intersections where we have lights, we need to go back and restripe those. Um, and we need to deal with the low-hanging stuff. Now, the other one was the um, the uh, highest traffic count. So you talked about the highest crash um, rates and the highest traffic counts, and we need a map because when you're, you're talking about the highest crash rates and the highest traffic counts, it would be good when we look at a map and we say uh, this is where the highest uh, crash rates are, whether they're property or injury or personal injury. Or this is where we have the highest traffic counts. That gives us an idea where the cameras are in relations to those things. So it would be good if Public Works could provide us with maps, uh, highest traffic counts and highest crash rates when we're talking about cameras and where the cameras are going. So I asked Public Works to kind of work on that, uh, provide us this information so we have a visual when we're looking at this as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, uh, Peter Rizzo. I saw you had your hand up.
Thank you very much. I want to say that I appreciate your reception of the report, uh, council members. Uh, thank you very much for that. No one fault you for voting either way. The, we have new information that has come before us uh, that, that I wanted to bring to your attention to help you make the right decision moving forward. Commissioner Finn, on the counterpoints that you raised, I, I appreciate that. I'd like to make you aware that you need to follow not only state law, but also the city code. And this common council voted in February of twenty nineteen to establish school zones with a distance of one quarter mile, one thousand three hundred and twenty feet from a school building. So it does not give you leeway. You have to put that at the point of change under the, the traffic manual. It's that simple. And I, I look forward to discussing that further with you, but understand that even when you consider all accidents of any kind, it doesn't change the findings. It's, it's uh, very similar. And I understand, council members, that these schools with the highest crash rates are also in low-income minority and high-poverty neighborhoods. So if we concentrated all of those cameras at those schools that have the highest crash rates, we would be putting them all, all but a handful, or actually just two of them would go in a community that's high poverty, uh, low income and minority. Speed cameras are not the solution, and I implore you to terminate this program. It is not right for the city of Buffalo. You can always restart it at another time. But right now, it's, it is wrong for Buffalo and its people. Thank you.
Sorry, I saw you had your hand up. I was on mute.
Yes, I, I think that this will need a little bit of a legal review of the state law versus the city code, especially as it relates to the thirteen hundred and twenty feet. Uh, I am under the impression that we cannot supersede state law. So I think that's very important that we get an answer to that question uh, first. Uh, I think it's very important that we all read and reread the state law. It says, "In selecting a school speed zone in which to install and operate a photo speed violation monitoring system, the city shall consider criteria including, but not limited to speed data, crash history, and the roadway geometry applicable to such school speed zones." So I think the bottom line here is, there, there could be many different interpretations. Uh, we can read one thing one way, somebody could read it and look at it the other way. I think a lot of this is, uh, we have to have those discussions, and I think those discussions are very important, especially into the methodology of how we went about choosing our twenty school zones. Thank you.
You're muted, Chairman.
Thank you. Um, we will decide and will be tabled.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
No further items. Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.